Yeah.
I think he made a good choice.
They said, uh, their president.
This summer day wedding. Major kid. He was being very worried. I mean, he's a good owner.
About the call to order the November twenty eighth, sorry, November twenty eighth, December fourth, regular meeting of the Barnes Ferry City Council, do stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the prayer by the floor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we ask your blessing tonight on this council meeting. Grant our city leaders hope wisdom, patience, and understanding to make the best decisions for our city and its people. Amen. Mr. Hucker.
Here.
Mr. Ashland.
Here.
Mrs. Armstrong.
Here.
Mr. Rogers. Mr. Nyman.
Here.
Reverend Agnew.
Here.
Mr. Trent.
Here.
You should have all received copies of the minutes of the last meeting. Are they really? You've not been able to see them as you see. Do we have any questions? No. You should have all received copies of the, um, changes to the, um, ordinances that we would look over to the additions for this year. See if you see any outstanding, um, changes that being made, then we will pass them probably at the first meeting of January. Since the next meeting, um, gray area, gray town, particularly down the past, as it's only. Then if we don't have any other correspondence, we'll be allowing reports of officers of the city and we'll start.
I have a few things that's been short on land today. We are ready for winter. We've got one salt box in our truck, but that's often pouring, maybe two more down. With all our trucks, um, normally we want to keep two of them full because we want our cemetery to get the grace of love. So we are ready for winter. Hopefully our dome works, we don't get any snow, but we'll see. To Ed Jackson, Paul and Lisa Montreux. If we get you guys here the other day, if we can get council being fit to go ahead, it had been done. I have another, I have asked me to do next, and I also have to do the MS on track yet. One other thing that Andy and I have a businessman today is with big hopes to do some expansion in City Barnes Ferry, a larger section of the property in the city. Not related to liberty, that's expressed too much, but just wanted you guys to know that we do have, is possibly some industrial, um, those coming back in town. And it's just my review for all of us and what personal mistakes everybody else, so we are.
Any questions for the mayor? Thank you, mayor. Service safety director, Mr. Sutak.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of things really, mayor, we, uh, went over about the, uh, salt boxes that we already again. Uh, we've got plenty of salt, uh, in our, uh, salt bin. Uh, probably first a week or so of January, we'll try to get another truckload or two in to build that up even more to get ready for later in the new year. Um, the, I don't have a lot right now on the water plant. Pretty much everything is, is done on the normal things. Our two biggest projects will be, well, three that hasn't been done is the, uh, filter beds, and that probably won't start till the first of next year. Uh, in the, uh, ozone room, uh, in the skater system, uh, talking to the mayor. We want to do a couple more upgrades to the skater system to be able to have these, uh, the system set up in our pump stations and stuff where then we can go online automatically and take care of, uh, uh, any of the situations that may happen in, in our pump stations. Um, we'll be getting our generator for the sunset, uh, uh, tank and, and pump station. Uh, so in case there's any inclement weather, um, it'll kick on, it's going to be a gas, uh, gas propane, uh, generator. It'll be enough to, uh, operate that pump station out there, so we shouldn't have a problem. We already have, so until that's set there, we have a backup plan with Herb. I believe it is that, uh, they will give us a, a generator temporarily, uh, if there would be an issue. So we don't, uh, have any long period of water being down, uh, out in the township area. So we're, we're, uh, set for all those things. And other than that, um, I have nothing else, Madam President.
Any questions for Mr. Sutak? Thank you, Mr. Sutak.
Thank you, Madam President.
Attorney, Mr. Regis.
Hi, David. Andy's talked to the office today, come and keep it short. He said, you know, this last meeting, they're trying to make up work tonight.
DJ.
So I'll keep it short. Uh, I seen in the minutes, it was asked about that phone, uh, in the, uh, in that proposal. Uh, that was just a friends read over, I don't know what your thoughts is on it, but my thoughts is it was going to say it was three hundred and ninety five dollars, seventy-five cents, one hundred and six, three ninety-two. And that's anything I was using for it. Anything we can cut a corner here or there, use it, I was trying to do it. Uh, John always said we reviewed the lease contract. Uh, you received a new November cash report along with the payroll summary. Um, you can load all those in this lady's business and, and pass a motion on it if you will. If you, uh, I gave you your, your statements of cash, you'll notice the, um, the sanitation is in, in the red right now. Uh, you got another, you got receipts coming in for December, so we're going to watch those. And there will be a loan made from the, uh, I'll go with Andy, Andy, we can use it, I'll make a loan from the general fund. Make sure it finishes in the black, and we'll worry about it next year. John and I talked about it today too, so, uh, we had lengthy talk about it, so, uh, it'll be taken care of, so we'll just make that temporary loan and have it taken care of. Um, there's two POs here. There's one for the fire department, alert fire truck, they had a blowout the other day on one of their tires. When they checked, the other six tires were in bad shape, so they had to replace them also. So there was also a PO for Robinson. If you got any question on that, Andy could answer that one, that's, uh, that's on that proposal. Um, I think, I think that's all right now. Uh, unless there's any questions? Yes.
What was the whole of the PO for the tires?
The tires had to replace all, it's thirty-eight hundred dollars, had to replace all six tires.
Where do you live with that?
Uh, where'd it go? Best one, best one.
Kept out there.
Kept out there. Yes.
They were also twenty years old.
Yes, yeah, twenty years old too, so. And. The tread lines wore as much as the age got them, right? So, uh, that's pretty much it.
Any questions?
Thank you. How's that, Andy?
That's fine. Uh, did you want to give the amount on that pipe painting that we had on?
I didn't remember that one.
I'll, I already did that.
What was the amount on that?
Um, this additional one that, uh, we came in later.
I think it was forty-six something.
Yeah, let me get it. It's four thousand fifty.
Four thousand fifty?
Yeah, four thousand fifty.
What was that for?
The pipe clean down on Broadway.
Three, four, five, I'm sorry, three.
Any other questions for Mr. Sutak? Nothing for Mr. Regis. Um, water director, did he have any?
No report.
Police Department, chief?
Good evening, everyone. At November's end of month report, police department handled a total of six hundred and three calls. Dispatch did five hundred and forty-four calls were with police response, one hundred and thirty calls with EMS fire response, forty-seven calls for city services. As far as police activity, we had a hundred and sixty complaint investigations with thirty-three follow-up investigations, fifty-eight traffic stops, twenty-nine assist other unit calls, thirty juvenile complaints, twenty-two criminal cases processed for prosecution, eleven criminal arrests, twelve suspicious activity calls, seventeen domestic violence calls, seventeen annual complaints, fourteen vehicle accidents, armed drugs, twelve warrant services, three calls about threats or harassment, one fight, one death investigation, one shooting, and one non-vehicle overdose. Just a brief for the month, there are currently four inbounded vehicles, one of them being processed, being forfeited, one is being processed for asset recovery. If you don't know what that is, um, it's a bank has interest in the vehicle, so they may recover the vehicle from or in time off. Um, update on K nine situation placement and, and sale of the car. Information was published statewide with the help of the Ohio Association of Chiefs of Police. Fewer's agencies have responded with interest. Agency is traveling to the area next week to meet and greet with lines. No further interest right now with the, uh, with the car. Update on our unit situation, unit six that was struck by a truck driver about a month ago, we sent to church on Monday for repair damage. Unit three is out of service for engine trouble.
Is that one we're taking up, towed up to Hyatt's?
Yeah, to Hyatt's ship.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, they did repair a lifter a couple of weeks ago, and same thing happened to a different cylinder, cylinder one was bad, and looking at cylinder seven now.
That's under warrants, correct? Do you find that, do you?
It should be. It's within a hundred thousand miles, so it should be. The last one was, so we're anticipating this one also. Also, Marksberry Police Department is advancing towards achieving state accreditation that has been reestablished on the governor of the lines executive order. Law enforcement agencies obtain certifications of standards set forth by the Ohio Collaborative Community Police Advisory Board. The Ohio Collaborative is a twelve-person panel of law enforcement experts and community leaders from throughout the state that establish state standards. These standards will hold everyone accountable and instill greater confidence with the public. Collaborative works closely with partners, including the community and law enforcement agencies to implement standards. All law enforcement agencies are expected to meet or exceed these standards as they develop policies and procedures to meet these expectations. Marksberry Police Department recently achieved provisional certifications in crisis intervention, positive youth interactions, agency wellness, law enforcement assistance to mass protest, property inevidence, recruitment and hiring, and use of force. And there are currently seven groups of thirteen to fifteen standards. We have five of them completed with provisional certifications. That's all I have.
That's good.
Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, chief, congratulations on my certifications.
Thank you.
Party department?
Well, Jack covered the big one already. As you stated, the tires went out on engine one, so, uh, that's got to be taken care of, obviously, they were from two thousand and five, so those are replaced, and engine one is back in service as of, uh, I believe, Monday evening or Tuesday morning. Uh, parade went off, I think, without a hitch. Uh, we did have less turnout, uh, this year as far as units in the parade. Uh, I'm not sure what played a factor in that, but I think it was about half of what we've typically seen. Uh, but all in all, I think it was a success, and, uh, we look forward to getting there next year. That's all of that. Questions?
Question?
Oh, yeah, reminder department meeting is Saturday the fourteenth, uh, at the Alert Engine Company at seven thirty P M. I told them last month.
Were any other officers in the room to report? Yes, Mr. Ashland.
Been better at this point, but just to see an overall evaluation of 2024 for the city, where it's fairly good as well as the lots of that.
I think one of the biggest accomplishments the city's made in the whole is all our departments working together this year is what it showed us. We work with common goal with people, every member of people from everybody from your Aspen Union to your Anderson Police Department and your department, all of your fire services. So they've all got a service for our people and think this is the first year that I can remember, and I've been involved in the city government, I think some years, that everybody come together, pulled a rope in the same direction, seemed to be going really well. I'm not saying we don't have issues and we don't argue because everybody does not argue with everybody, it's just what I am. But I think you know, one good, I think our, our, our short flaws, I don't believe it's the fault of the city, it's just hard to entice businesses in here. Like I said, we had a business manager here today talking to him, hopefully we can entice some businesses into our industrial part to get better paying jobs. It's just hard to bring business, it's just hard. There's your community, it's everybody, I'm a member of the group. So I think that's the biggest disappointment we have, but we've accomplished many things this year from replacing, we're doing things we've never done before, putting our own water lines. We've had some major setbacks, major repairs, and Andy's got a lot of funding and he has done a lot on the financial side, so it's starting to all come together and hopefully next year is about to come true.
One thing, uh, one dude, just vibrating a little bit on what John said, our hats are really off to, I mean, they started the leader programs, leaders picked in, took office departments and the managers, the chiefs and that. And it's one of the first years, John, I was talking about that in my office afternoon, one of the first years we get to this time in the budget that we don't worry about laying everybody off on the holidays. It's really a good feeling for a city. I think it's a, it's something that council should be proud of, that all the work they've done, hours they put in, everybody put in, it's showing because, you know, people are sitting relaxed and going to Christmas, enjoying the holidays and like they should be instead of worrying about getting laid off.
And one thing I would like to say, um, just to get or reiterate some things is that how far we have advanced with upping our water, um, system, um, the wells being cleaned and, uh, they all knew motors and screens and filtrations into our wells, the upgrade of our water plant, how far we've come in a year, you've got to understand how technical that plan is, that up through when we started this and the funding, we still got two major things to do, but if you look at all the things we've done with our water system, um, our pump stations and so on and so forth, um, we're, we're hopefully by the middle of next year, we'll have pretty much everything done. And there's a couple other specialty, specialty things, if we have any additional funding left over that we're going to do, that everything we've done, pretty much brand new. Uh, the mayor definitely wants, uh, what, two or three wells, uh, cleaned and trucked next year in a, in a, in a rotation every three years, not five years like it was in the past, to clean the wells and so on. We, we downed it to three years because of the type of, uh, water system we have. So those are some of the, uh, the proud things that the mayor, uh, uh, has done for this city and, and council helping out with the funding to make sure our water plant is, is up to the best it can be. So, um, I'm sure we should be proud on that. Thank you.
Richard, if you remember when I became mayor five years ago, Jack and I was talking about this today and it's, it's kind of comic today, but one comic for them, when your auditor walks in and tells me in March, I gotta lay out the whole street department. And I'm like, what, you don't have any money? And I said, yeah, well, I'm not gonna do that. And then told me I'd be liable for money if I overspend. So I mean, my hat's kind of off the council because I said, look, we can't help the street department, we gotta figure out a way to fund this. They did it, we put together a plan, council was over a plan and interfunded a plan. And Jack's been interponder since I've been there, Ms. Davis, Andy, and he's really good. Trying to keep me from overspending, but what people have to remember, we've been here five years, there have been no rate increases in five years. In five years, we upgraded trucks, five and a half million dollar water plant, wells, equipment, we have a long way to go, we've come a long way from how we started and hopefully in the next few years, we can finish and set the city on our way. I have future administrations after us continuing to go along with it. This is the first time I ever seen the city workers in a team. And it was a struggle when we got there.
I'd like to add to that too. We've had positions that were eliminated or at least not filled. And the mayor and our service director have assumed those responsibilities a lot, but over the last couple of years, that can't continue forever. But that's part of the way that we've actually made it through. We don't have a director at the, down at the rec center, for example. We don't have a development director, we don't have a street superintendent, and those responsibilities have been taken on, on by our administration. And that's why some things, um, you know, have been done in a different way, but that's not going to continue. And Alex, one other thing, and then the other one, um, I'm happy that in working with the core group, the state or agencies, um, council and the administration, that we were able to eliminate a threat to our water department this year. That it took a lot of work, that took a lot of difficult steps, um, a lot of changes in the way people view things. We did work more this year with the corporate than we had before, and I'm quite happy that that, um, that threat's been eliminated, at least for now. And, um, and I'm really proud of us on the actual return.
Very good, thank you. And how about prospects for the city for 2025? How do they look?
Well, we're gonna take our downer funds, $581,000, play a lottery, hotel, we hit it. I think we're gonna continue moving forward. We have a great work report with everybody. You know, I had guys that are truck drivers who are taking ditches, fixing water lines, everybody kind of come together. And I figure that's gonna continue on. Um, Jack and I talked today about some demolitions, some other things, some other projects. So we bounce projects off each other and to see what, you know, what may work or what we can fund, just the, some of the little stuff people think are really little or giant steps to the city, because stuff that hasn't been done before. So I think it's just a matter of continuing to work in the government, city board, um, hopefully we get different money for different avenues and we get some business in town.
Thank you.
Rich, I would like one other comment, that one huge, thank the mayor that, um, when we had the, um, COVID situation and a lot of people weren't working or whatever, remember, we, we took our water consumption from 2,500 gallons, the mayor, uh, moved it up to 4,000 gallons of usage at the minimum, the 2,500 was minimum, we moved it up to 4,000, you know, to help the, the people that maybe weren't working because of the COVID situation. And I think a lot of people should thank the mayor, uh, for pushing to, to do this. And, and at the time, we still left it at 4,000 gallons. I don't know what other entities are at that 4,000 gallon at a minimum cost, but, but I think people should, should thank, uh, the mayor for looking into the situation that transpired and then trying to help the best we can on the financial situations that occurred at that time. So I just wanted to bring that out.
Thank you.
I'm Frank Papini, I'm with the United Steelworkers Retirement Organization, Mayor Martin Farrelly. Mayor, we just, I talked a little bit last week about the, uh, did you talk to the auditor from the Hill with the Steel Facility about the Congress is going on here and get a city get a piece of the pie?
Them are employees that are based there that we do, uh, receive tax base.
Okay. Okay, I just, I didn't know what the question was.
Actually talked to them today, I think they had eight employees in there, eight there and nine in the other place. And they have another facility in town that also had nine people working.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, was curious, okay, thank you.
Frank, just to let you know, anything we get a chance to look at for employment, because if it's income tax that helps our department, our, our city, we're, we're going to keep on it.
That's my question.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Um, if there are no other residents, we will move on to consideration of what we can do to the residents. We do have one this evening, it will require, um, is that the two variable to be suspended?
I'll make that motion.
Question by Mr. Hunkert, that we suspend the seventy-two variable, second by Mr. Schramm. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Hunkert?
Yes.
Mr. Ashman?
Yes.
Mrs. Armstrong?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Nyden?
Yes.
Reverend Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Schramm?
Yes, sir.
Reverend Agnew has suspended the seventy-two variable, would we defer the budget of council? Mr. Schramm?
As ordered, sir.
Suspension, please. Question by Mr. Schramm, that we suspend the rules on the three readings, do I have a second? Second by Reverend Agnew, is there any discussion?
Do we need to hear the actual reading of the ordinance?
We should.
An ordinance selling to retired police chief Gabriel to the Bridgeport Fire Department.
Okay, I have a motion, um, and a session on suspension of rules, is there any discussion about that?
Fire chief.
It's supposed to be fire chief.
Yeah, it's fire chief.
Fire chief, they give.
Police chief.
Fire chief. Okay, fire chief. If not, then we have a roll call.
Mr. Schramm?
Yes.
Mr. Hunkert?
Yes.
Mr. Ashman?
Yes.
Mrs. Armstrong?
And?
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Nyden?
Yes.
Reverend Agnew?
Yes.
Reverend Agnew has suspended the rules, would we defer the, as your counsel, Mr.?
I make the motion that we pass as read.
Motion by Mr. Rogers, that we pass the ordinance separate, as written, second by Mr. Hunkert. Any discussion?
For this ordinance today, I've got to say, I have a couple of questions on it. One is, section one, it says that no longer needed for any municipal purpose. Who decided what needed anywhere in the city? That's my first question. The, the second one is, section four, and it says that there was emergency necessary to serve public peace, safety, health of citizens of the city, or to benefit the city. That's my question, I want to know. Because that's a question that if this gets out in the public, I'm gonna have to be able to answer.
I can answer on behalf of the fire department that, uh, Chief Ronholt and myself had no discussions internally, uh, with the safety director or service director, whether or not the vehicle was needed, I was aware within the city limits, uh, within the minutes of probably a month or so.
You had none?
We had zero.
Okay.
But this discussion was made and the promise was made under the last administration, like I said last month. It is the fire department's stance that we want to honor.
But my thing is, we have departments inside the city that can use these vehicles and, um, I mean, this, this ordinance is untrue. This untrue statement.
The fire department no longer needs to be able, the fire department.
Okay, well, they said any, any.
I have nothing in the ordinance.
So you don't have the ordinance?
I do not have, okay.
Mine. It says not for use of any municipal purposes, we have larger divisions, if we have an EMS department that can use a, a, another vehicle, turn it, or pay it, or directly benefit our citizens. So selling this at half the net worth or, or what it's worth, or a market value to another municipality doesn't benefit our citizens who pay for this stuff.
It's going to benefit the citizens by the sale of their vehicle, the money will get towards the Marksberry Fire Department. By the money coming back to us, we have, if you don't, if you don't know where, we have $500,000 worth of equipment that is expiring in June of 2025, if you're not aware of it.
I'm sorry, say it again.
June of 2025?
Right.
The Marksberry Volunteer Fire Department has $500,000 of equipment that needs replacing.
Right.
Because it meets its life expectancy. The Marksberry Fire Department can use that $10,000. Not the school for a little vehicle, not the city that's around with it.
This is one of my questions. So the vehicles were $20,000.
Correct.
We're also $10,000, we need $500.
Yeah.
So let me ask you a question. If it was you and somebody a couple of years ago said, I need $80,000 to buy something, or I need $90,000 to buy something, what are you gonna choose?
Well, depends upon the situation, where I had other ways to get what I needed, I asked for the aid.
Which were what ways?
Grant applications.
Grant applications?
None of the applications.
What, what happened if you don't get the grants?
Well, we're gonna figure things out.
Is that your money?
I have your money.
I have your money. Okay, I'm not gonna make that, all right, it's just my question, I just gotta know questions too when it comes to you. I've already had people ask me, I said, I don't want to get into it. And then the council, so you do it, I really do it.
Mr. Nyden?
Yeah, I didn't know you knew this, John, Dave, Bridgeport's up here off the top and they help us out and you help them out. And I was in the fire department, I did it like 1971, and we've always had mutual aid, you know, amongst the fire departments. We'd give Bridgeport hoes, we'd give them vehicles, I mean, over the years we give them. And to sell that truck, it's under good, you know, we're trying to be good partners with them. You know what I'm saying? Like, we need them, they don't have the equipment, they don't have the equipment now, they, they need equipment, they can't get the equipment, and my equipment, they need it too. The day they picked me up off of the fire station parking lot, the guy told me going down there to Bridgeport, he said, we had five calls up here for dessert today because mine was fifth one. Mr. Farrelly didn't have any money out. How come they didn't have anybody out?
The competitive staff, the EMS is superior, so these guys are picking where the wages are best, wherever they can get the most ours, and we've had this discussion probably thirty times with some with council, some with EMS, it's just hard to get staffing.
Yeah, they've sold fire trucks for barely nothing. We've sold garbage trucks in the city down there, when I worked there, my truck would be ripped down, and there goes Pickens from Barnesville going by, hey, wanna borrow my truck, and he just bought it off us for $20,000. And when I was driving, it's a valid joke, and that truck was running back on the road. Wait your turn, Susan, I'm still not here. Um, but, you know, we try to do that, you know, mutual aid and all that, and they help us out so much. I myself, I wouldn't think one minute of that, so that truck didn't really help them out.
Mrs. Armstrong? Yes. Any other comments?
I change my mind. Uh, my, my concern is if we don't allow the sale of the fire truck to Bridgeport, or I'm just gonna put a generic fire department and let, and assign it to another department in our city, the fire department is gonna lose the value which they improved by buying it, and I, I believe we should benefit the true owner of the, of the vehicle with the money and not assign it to somebody department. I'd rather have the fire department reap the benefit of the sale and not just let it get to the point of being put down by the, um, water department is unusable. At least it's, we're gonna have some value to it.
Chief?
On the same token, we do have another, uh, 2018 Ford Explorer that the squad is currently using. That was given to them last year, uh, you know, where, where's the fire department getting the money back from that that came out of our funds?
And we, we need to have that legal discussion, and we do it on the floor if you want, I don't care.
No, we don't have that on the floor, there's a meeting scheduled for Friday.
Paul needs to make some legal opinions here, because you guys are in the EMS building paid for by EMS money, the police department has an impound law on EMS property, and where's the reimbursement for that?
And please don't mind, we're gonna have to move on, we have a, we have a motion on the floor, see whether to pass or not pass this ordinance. So we're gonna move on, and I think you can deal with that, with the other issue. Is there any further discussion that pertains to this ordinance? If not, then we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Nyden?
Yes.
And Reverend Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Schramm?
Yes.
Mr. Hunkert?
Yes.
Mr. Ashman?
Yes.
Mrs. Armstrong?
Yes.
The ordinance is declared passed. There's enough further legislation now where, um, we'll go into the remaining business, and I think we should start with the executive session that's been requested for consideration. What was my job?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Ashman, we're in the executive session. I have a second, second by Reverend Agnew. Trying to session. Don't have a roll call vote, we have the executive session. Yeah, the executive session, one twenty-one, twenty-two, G four. Consideration. Selecting parties.
Uh, Mr. Ashman?
Yes.
Mrs. Armstrong?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Nyden?
Yes.
Reverend Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Schramm?
Yes.
Mr. Hunkert?
Yes.
We'll go into executive session, is there anyone you would like to stay? Is there anyone you want to stay in the two weeks?
All, I say.
I'm, Paul, I'm saying.